Everyone, I have four o'clock, so we are going to call the January 4th Slyna City Commission meeting to order. I would first ask staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have a roll call.
Mayor Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Fran?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Great. Thank you. I would ask all those that are attending the meeting by Zoom that you please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, I see where we have no awards or proclamations. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, we will move into the citizens forum. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public that would like to address any item that is not on the agenda today. We would ask that you please give your name and where you're from and keep your comments to five minutes or less. I would ask, look at Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood to maybe explain to everyone that's on how to raise their hand and...
I'm not going to see anybody from the public that's online, but if there's somebody that does want to... Also just wave at me. I don't see anybody on here. Nobody has their hand raised at this time, and it looks like there's only one or two members of the public anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move into public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing and Adoption of the 2021 Amended Budget.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time and turn it over to Ms. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Back in October, the City Commission authorized the mayor to sign a management agreement with the local entity. The City Commission adopted an ordinance to establish the former Shillan Air Force Base Environmental Project Fund to track those receipts and rep expenditures. As you may recall, the 2021 annual budget for the City of Slyna was adopted back in August of 2020, at which time that fund was not authorized nor was set up at that point. So it's necessary at this time for us to go back and amend the 2021 budget to include this fund, to allow us the authorization to spend funds out of this fund. Statute requires that we hold a formal public hearing and that we publish that formal hearing 10 days prior to the date of the hearing. That notice was published in the Slyna Journal on December 24. Mediation with the SPEs in the suit against the United States resulted in a settlement in which the United States agreed to deposit funds in the amount of $65,900,000 with the SPEs. We also had funding left over from the initial funds that were contributed on behalf of the initial cleanup project and testing of about $1.8 million. It'll be transferred into this fund. Because the timeline of this project is still unknown, staff is recommending that we budget $67,500,000 for 2021. It's not anticipated that will spend those funds because those funds are anticipated to be spent over the next 30 years, but without knowing at this point what portion of those funds will be spent in 2021, staff is recommending that full amount. Upon approval, the proposed budget amendments will authorize the revisions to the fund, and the certified amended budget will be submitted to the county for submission to the state. So we have two actions today to conduct the public hearing and also consider approval of the amended budget for the 2021 budget. Staff recommends the approval of the amended budget.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pack. With that, are there any questions or comments from the commission?
I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Wood, do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment?
It's indicating they want to speak at this time, Mayor.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hoppick, Carl Ryan here. I move we approve the amended budget.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
We have, Mayor Hoppick here, we have a motion as second to approve the amended budget. I would ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fran?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. Thank you. That passes 5-0. Commissioner Hodges, I might ask you to turn up your microphone or get closer to it. Is anybody else having trouble hearing her?
I can hear her, but she's a bit faint, yes.
Oh, very few people ask me to get louder, but I'm happy to.
I thought about it really hard, but I just want to make sure the public can hear you also, so...
Absolutely.
Okay, that will move us to item 6.1, Consent Agenda.
Item 6.1, Approve the Minutes of December 28, 2020.
Okay. Are there any additions or deletions? If not, I would accept a motion to approve.
Commissioner Davis moved to approve the minutes of last week's meeting.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
Okay, we have a motion as second. We will take a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fran?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That passes 5-0. With that, we will move into administration. Item 7.1.
Item 7.1, authorize the purchase and installation of an emergency backup generator for the Slyna Animal Shelter in an amount not to exceed $65,024 to be funded from the Animal Services Donation
Chris Cotton with us, and also it looks like Monique and maybe Lisa, so...
Yes, sir.
You gonna take the lead?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Through the general fund, but through the Animal Services Donation Account, there's currently $549,588 in this account, and this purchase will leave a remaining balance of $484,564. The cost of the generator itself is $43,690.51, and it will be purchased off the state bid contract through Foley Equipment. The facility's maintenance division will oversee the construction of the concrete pad to sit the generator on and will request bids for the hookup of the generator. With commission's approval of an amount not to exceed $65,024, city staff will then bid the cost of the electrical connection and take it back to the city manager for approval. The cost of electrical hookup will not exceed the city manager's purchasing authority, but as part of the overall project, it is prudent to seek the approval of the city commission. In the event of a prolonged power outage, the shelter will be able to continue spay and neuter surgeries and also be used for more extensive animal care if needed during a crisis. Additionally, if the surgery procedure is in progress when power fails, the surgery will not be interrupted. There are currently emergency generators at the police department, the fire department, and the water treatment plant in the event of an emergency so they can sustain operations, and this would allow the animal shelter to do the same. Approval of this project will allow the city to stay in compliance with the Kansas Pet Animal Act. It will also enable the staff of the animal shelter to focus on the care of over 6,597 Slyna households that own dogs, 5,495 households that own cats in the city. I recommend approval of the project at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cotton. Any questions?
Commissioner Davis, just, how long can this generator? Does that equate to for operating time? Just out of pure curiosity.
Off the top of my head, I don't have the answer to that question, but I can find out for you.
I don't have a generator. I don't know, are they very fuel-hungry machines or not necessarily?
What I can tell you is that the previous recreation center I managed had a generator that had a similar capacity. We filled it, we filled it once a year. It fired up every Wednesday for operations. The initial fill-up, we didn't have to fill it up for almost three years from test purposes, so it will last, it will last a while, but I don't have an exact timeframe. I'll find out for you.
Thank you.
Are you a question?
Commissioner Hodges here. I just... Purchasing authority, but then it also goes on to say that because it is part of the overall project, cost it requires commission approval. So is that something that's coming back to us? Do we just, can we make the approval for the entire $65,000?
That's a really good question that staff raised. This is our first item under the new purchasing policy, so what we were proposing to you...
On the, this is Commissioner Ryan, on the point of holding animals that were...
Monique, do you want to take that?
So if you'd allow staff to crisis hold animals for citizens who are unable to care for their animals, how would that aspect work? Have you got...
That would be, if we had a crisis hold for an animal, we had one back in, I believe it was 2008 with that big ice storm that we had, and we had no power. Yeah, I'm not sure why I'm echoing, I'm sorry. But we did take in lizards and snakes and cats and dogs for people who did not have power because of that ice storm. We held them until they either got a generator or they were able to get power restored to their home and come and get their pet. Most of them were less than a 10-day hold. They came as soon as they could to get their pets, but we were there for them when they needed it.
I think I got most of that, but I think I'm having a flashback to it.
Sorry.
You're echoing badly. Thank you.
Monique, any other questions or comments?
This is Deputy City, Lisa, if your microphone's on, computer can hit mute. I think that's the feedback going on. If you guys are in the same room, you should be able to hear.
Mr. Wood, you're cutting out for me as well. Cutting out but not echoing.
I am unneeded, and it's still echoing.
That's awesome.
This one, Monique, goes back on mute, and that may solve our problem.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Is there anyone from the public that would like to weigh in on this?
I don't see any at this time.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Commissioner Hodges, I move that we approve...
Right ahead, question.
Okay, okay. I move that we approve the purchase of an emergency backup generator from Foley Power Solutions in the amount of $43,690.51, and give authorization to the city manager to award the bid for installation of electrical service upon the completion of a competitive bid process.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion as second to approve the purchase of an emergency backup generator from Foley Power Solutions in the amount of $43,690.51. We will do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fran?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That also passes 5 to 0. That will bring us to item 7.2.
Item 7.2, Consider Resolution Number 21-7926, extending the timeframe for use of emergency paid sick leave and emergency family and medical leave to March 31, 2021.
Is Ms. Fisher available?
I am. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. On December 27... Medical leave, both of those with specific criteria related to COVID that were outlined in the staff report. Private employers, the incentive to provide this and to extend it is tax credits. However, the City of Slyna is not eligible for those. Even without having those tax credits, staff is requesting the ability to extend those to March 31. This does not add additional leave, it just provides a three-month window to those that still had a balance to be able to use those if the need arises. We previously extended the city COVID leave through June 15, and then I tried to provide some data as far as the emergency paid sick leave, and how many of our employees still had some of that leave available. I didn't break down the percentages of both types of leaves combined and how much leave is exactly left by the type for employee, but when I looked at how many of our employees have exhausted everything related to COVID, both the emergency paid sick leave and the COVID, about 17% had exhausted everything. So I guess that's the good news is our employees haven't had the need to use all of that. We are still seeing... I've also mentioned in the staff report, the expanded family medical leave would be part of this. We currently don't have anyone using this, and we've had it used on a limited basis. I credit that to the good fortune that our schools have been opened. The reason for that leave is very specific, either a place of care or a school of children under the age of 18. It is closed due to COVID, so I think that is why we haven't had an increase or a lot of usage for that particular type of leave. The budget currently allows personnel expenditures that assume full staffing, so the granting of the extension or the leave to be used doesn't really add the expenditure, it's just going to be provided paid leave in the event someone's not performing the work that we would normally get in that exchange. So with that information and with that background, I'll bring it back as far as the options. What we've identified, approving Resolution 21-7926 would authorize the extension of the timeframe for the use of the emergency paid sick leave and emergency family and medical leave to March 31, 2021. Approving that resolution with amendments as the commission deems fit, postponing consideration and requesting staff to provide additional information or to bring back additional information to obtain guidance at a future date, or option four to, for the commission to choose not to pass the resolution at this time. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, questions for Ms. Fisher? Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item?
I'm in a meeting.
I don't see any at this time, Mayor Hoppick.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Commissioner Davis, move we approve Resolution 21-7926, authorizing the extension of the timeframe for the use of emergency paid sick leave and the emergency family and medical leave to March 31, 2021.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
Hey, Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion as second to approve Resolution Number 21-7926. We will have a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fran?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Ms. Fisher. That will lead us to item, let's see, we have no development business, so I would ask, does any commissioner have other business before we move into executive sessions? I have one item, but...
Commissioner Hodges, I just have one item. I wanted to...
An update. We've tracked down kind of how that was operated previously. We're tracking down kind of the status of how that came to be in the first place and whether the city and animal services had any involvement. There's some signage that references animal services, but it's purely for the purpose of providing a number if there's an incident, a bite, something like that. So at this point, the, I was involved with initiating the notice that it was closing on the basis that the county was no longer leasing the facility and was withdrawing their operation of it. So we're staffing through at the moment what it would take, in our estimation, to stand it up as a dog park. In terms of openings in the fence and other things, it looks like it would need some work and we'd have to take it on as a national maintenance operation. So to date, what I was trying to track down is a history of how it came to be, whether the city had a role in that, confirming that until now we've not. It was something that was offered by the county.
Commissioner Hodges here. This was initiated by citizen contact, and they indicated... Shortcomings. Would it be appropriate to send those folks, have them contact your office? I know, or Mr. Wood, I know, you know, time is short there, but who would be the point of contact for me to have citizens to...
They can email me, and then I'll distribute it accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other items?
I've got one when everyone else is done.
Okay. I did want to update everybody, the... Look at, so I just wanted to update everybody that we did have a large response to that board. I wish we, some of our other boards would have a little more response, and we'd have, we'd have the same problem, but...
Commissioner Hodges here. I wholeheartedly support kind of brainstorming on the best way to go through the applications, and I'm just delighted that we had that many people that are concerned that deeply about our, our community. But whatever path that we kind of work out to go forward, I think it's going to need to be as transparent as possible because we do want the community to buy into this, this board. The community trust on both, from both the citizens and from law enforcement is obviously paramount, and I'm hopeful that we can set and process something that's going to, that's really going to get us there.
Thank you. Okay, any other business?
Mike's Craig here. Just one confirmation with you as a governing body, I guess. When, when we took up the question of whether the field house should stay open or be closed, and you as the governing body decided it should be closed, that was with the notation that when there's noticeable improvement is seen in the COVID numbers such as active cases, hospitalizations, and deaths, that you wanted to take that question back up. And I'm just confirming to you that staff's aware of it. In fact, we were staffing through whether it was time to put that back on your agenda, but looking at the numbers that we're seeing and based on the phone call, the planning call that I was on this morning with the health department and the hospital, I don't think that criteria of noticeable improvement in numbers is met at this time. So unless you provide direction to the contrary, we'll continue to monitor, but the, the death number that was reported for December is 41. So if you look at the last four months, that, my recollection is 2, 4, 15, and 41 respectively for the last four months. And then hospitalizations are described as hovering at or near capacity. I do know that the hospital has, you know, alternate measures that they can take in terms of occupancy and, and other locations, but hospitalizations are, are near their capacity. So if that is, if that remains your criteria, then we're not at the threshold of bringing that back to you at this time.
I agree with that synopsis.
Same.
Fully agree. Commissioner Davis here. Just going to ask one question.
Fully agree. Commissioner Davis here, just going to ask one question about the EOIs for the citizens review board. Do you foresee a scenario in which the five of us, at least at some point, would at least have a list of everyone who? But I, I agree, going through 92 application, I mean, it's a lot of work and, and I could certainly see a good reason for streamlining the process, but what, what that would, would look like. But we'd like to know who, who did apply.
Yeah, I, I would anticipate that. And then I don't know how we would whittle that number down, but yeah, we can sure do that, Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Hodges here, as I've given it some not very much thought, but I'm thinking that this may look like two or three rounds. I mean, it may be an initial pass through by the governing body and we try to get that number down to. And this is just me speaking, so take it for what it's worth. But you know, maybe we can get that number down to, I don't know, 20 or 30 and then maybe do a round of ranked choices or something like that. But I think we also all need to be really clear on the criteria that we're looking for, but what's called for in the ordinance that set up the commission, but also some of the other discussions that we've had about making sure that maybe there were specific segments of the population at risk involved, whether that looks like, you know, someone who has experience with homelessness or domestic violence or, you know, making sure we have a wide range of, of ages. I mean, diversity comes in a lot of forms and we've, we've talked about a lot of that. So I think that we just kind of need to make sure that we're keeping all of that in mind as we're making those selections.
Mike Scragg here, two observations from past experiences and I'll ask the city attorney to correct me if I get this wrong. But you know, we need to be mindful of doing this in the open so that we are compliant with Kansas Open Meetings Act. And then additionally, while it may seem instinctive that this is a personnel-related scenario that could be discussed privately, we previously opined that that's not the case when it comes to committee appointments. So deliberations on, as awkward as it may be, deliberations on applicants and, and applications would be open discussion rather than closed.
Completely agree.
Yeah. If I could, I could chime in just a little bit, I would agree that maybe the approach of taking it in a series of rounds and eliminations is a, is a, might be something worth considering. I, I know that when you're, when you're dealing with, and it's different in some ways. If you're dealing with, you know, applications for a job, of course, that's personnel. You know, when you have lots of applicants, sometimes you can pick, you know, two or three critical job requirements and say, you know, the, in this case, 92, you know, 60 don't meet those, the kind of threshold criteria. I'm not sure if that same approach applies in this case because I'm not sure we have a specific enough job criteria, and I use the term job criteria, criteria, I guess I should say, that lend themselves to that sort of, you know, sort of rounds of elimination or sorting of individuals that we think are, are most suited. So, but I definitely think of, you know, we start talking about 92 people en masse, it's going to be a long process. So, you know, I, my, I have a certain amount of sympathy for Commissioner approaches this because it will be difficult.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay, any other business?
No, I, as Commissioner Davis, I need to ask a Robert's Rules of Order type question for the first request for an executive session. If I need to recuse myself, should I also refrain from entering the motion?
From, I'm sorry, go ahead, Greg.
I do think that would be best, Commissioner, that you not participate in the motion either.
Thank you. And should I make that recusal request now?
I would certainly. Toward the motion, that would be appropriate.
Okay, Mr. Bingsham couldn't hear you then?
I just said if, Mayor, if you were at a point where you were ready to advance the discussion toward the executive session motion, that would be the logical time for Commissioner Davis to address the point he wishes to address.
All right, assuming we're moving on to 9.1.
If no one else had any, any other items, any other business? Okay, with that, we'll move into item 9.1.
All right, it's Commissioner Davis again. The requested executive session involves discussion with or about, not with, but about restored properties. They are currently working on my house in a major way. And I think it would certainly be the appearance of impropriety if I engage in these discussions.
Thank you. And again, as last time, I do have an order from my business outstanding with Restore Properties. So I will also be recusing myself at this time.
All right, our numbers are dwindling.
Getting winnowed.
Well, let's hope the three of us make some good headway on this. Would either Commissioner Ryan or Commissioner France like to go ahead and make that motion for executive session? And Mr. Scragg, how long do you anticipate that we'll need?
My best estimate is 30 minutes.
All right.
Vice Mayor, I can make the, the motion. This is Commissioner Ryan. I move the city commission recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the subject of the legal considerations involved in responding to the proposal by Restore Properties LLC to purchase real estate owned by the city with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume on Zoom at, anyone have the time?
5:07.
5:07 PM. Thank you.
And I will second that motion.
We have.
And do I need to include that there was possible action to follow?
Oh, good call.
Yeah, we just generally announce that as we recess.
With possible action to follow, we have a motion and a second to recess into executive session until 5:07. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 3-0. I just realized we should have had a roll call. But at any rate, I'll catch, I'll catch that next time I have to do that. And with the notation that Mayor Hoppick and Commissioner Davis have recused themselves from this session.
Okay, so, go ahead, Jacob.
Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood, I will open the, the room and you should have a box that pops up and allows you to come in. If you, if it messes up for some reason, you can pop back into the original meeting and we'll get you set up.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. All right, we have Commissioner France, Commissioner Ryan, and this is Mayor, or Vice Mayor Hodges. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Scragg to bring us, bring everyone up to date on what we were discussing and how things are going to move forward.
Sure, thank you. As you know, we've received a proposal for potential redevelopment of Campbell Plaza by private parties. The proposal, as it's been presented, is transfer of ownership of Campbell Plaza to a private entity and return for relocating the stage and completing the Campbell Plaza improvements at the expense of the private party. So that, I would acknowledge that's a pretty significant proposal in light of our facilities in the downtown. And so the, the question before you is placing that on a future agenda and discussing that in open session. And I think you have some, some direction you might want to give staff in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Scragg. Do we have a, a motion to place this item on a future agenda and start engaging in some public discussion?
It looks like some of our commissioners are muted, so. We may not be able to be heard.
I see Mr. France is muted.
Yeah, okay, I just got the message. This is Commissioner France, I would, I would move that we direct staff to prepare a future agenda item for commission consideration of a proposal to transfer ownership of Campbell Plaza to a private entity and further to coordinate with Slana Downtown Incorporated for review and comment on those, on that proposal.
This is Commissioner Ryan, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to direct staff to prepare a future agenda item for the potential transfer of ownership of Campbell Plaza to a private entity and to direct staff to coordinate with SDI to get comment from the public. And I would just like to emphasize that that's not something that's going to happen in a week or two. It's going to take some time to do this right. So at any rate, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
Oh. Thank you for catching that. All right, we're going to have a roll call. Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hodges? Aye. That motion passes 3-0. And we would welcome Mayor Hoppick and Commissioner Davis back to the meeting and I'll turn it over to Mayor Hoppick.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hodges. Can everyone here hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis, are you back on?
I'm back on.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, we have one more executive session we need to go into. And I would expect this to last probably, let's go for 30 minutes to start with. And if I would probably ask that, is Ms. Fisher still on? I think I would ask her to join us to begin with. And then we can ask her to be excused once we've asked her a couple of questions.
All right, Mayor, I move the city commission recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the city manager's performance evaluation based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:42 PM.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
Okay, Mayor Hoppick here, we have a motion, a second to move into executive session for 30 minutes. I would ask Ms. Fisher to join us. We'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. Okay, thank you. We'll be back here in 30 minutes. Okay, I think we're back. Do we have everybody unmuted?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to?
Yes, we do. Mayor, I move we, I'm sorry, move the city commission recess again into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the city manager's performance evaluation based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 754319B1. The open meeting will resume in this room at 6:04 PM.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to move back into executive session. I'll do a roll call. Mayor, or Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick, aye. Okay. Mayor Hoppick? Aye. Okay, we'll go back in executive session for 20 minutes. Is everybody back? Did we lose anybody? Okay, we have no action at
Wait, can we have Carl?
Where's Carl?
No, there he is.
Did we get him back? There he is, he's just
I got lost.
Okay, he got lost, huh?
Out in the hallway again.
Yeah, lost in the ozone, you know?
Okay, we have, uh, no action at this time, so I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Hodges, so moved?
Commissioner Ryan, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. I'll do a quick roll call. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick is an aye. Thank you, everyone, for your input and we will see you back here next week.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.